Hi, I'm Allison Burke. I'm a member of the Andersonville community and I'm also a member of the LSC at Trumbull Elementary, delivering a statement from our community. Dear Chicago Board of Education, we are writing not only as concerned residents, school personnel, and business owners from the Andersonville and Edgewater neighborhood, but as stakeholders in our local schools. We are greatly concerned with the announcement of CPS's plan to close 120 schools citywide. Andersonville prides itself on our nationally renowned commercial district that is comprised almost entirely of locally owned, independent businesses. It is because of this focus that we have seen continuous growth, not only in our local economy, but also in our neighborhood involvement. Just a few years ago, Pierce Elementary was on probation. Our community rallied around the school and it is now touted as one of the best on the north side. Pierce is almost at capacity and pulls almost eighty percent of its enrollment from the neighborhood. Our community can be very proud of this achievement. Last year, word got out that another one of our schools, Trumbull Elementary, was in trouble. Trumbull's low test scores have placed it on Level III probation. This ranking, in addition to its low enrollment, make it eligible to be closed. It shouldn't be a surprise to anyone that our community has once again rallied to help out. In fact, three hundred and ninety-three parents and community members showed up at the polls and voted in a brand-new LSC at our school, opposed to eighty-three in the previous election. Residents, local businesses, the Andersonville Chamber of Commerce, and block clubs have reached out to help us. Trumbull has been inundated with words of support, offers of assistance, and donations. As a result, we've received a literacy grant from Roosevelt University, which has placed a reading coach in our school. Local bookstore Women and Children First has partnered with us to help provide books for a once-empty library.
Ms. Burke, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks to the leadership of our new principal, Venus Shannon, our ISAT scores have increased to seventeen point four percent last year, opposed to eleven point one in two thousand and eleven. We have done tons of improvements. Our neighborhood is committed to a local focus and taking care of the future of our community, and we respectfully ask you to include our voices and to make the process more transparent as you consider the status of Trumbull. We know our community better than anyone else and believe our input should be a critical factor in your decision. I'd also just like to state thirty percent of our children are special ed students, so the utilization data really isn't an accurate reflection of our school and how our school is utilized. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Burke, I just, I hope you heard earlier Dr. Bird Bennett say there isn't a plan to close one hundred and twenty-five schools. There is a process, and the process is to allow voices like yours to be heard, including at this meeting. So thank you for coming down and making your it, and I know there'll be additional opportunities for it to be heard in the process as it moves forward.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Our next speaker then is Cynthia Woods, followed by speaker number nine, Deborah Black, and then I would like to call speaker number ten, please, Ari Fried, followed by speaker number eleven, Marjoriea Morris.
Good afternoon, Board, Administration. It is my pleasure, as a staff member of the Illinois Association of School Boards, to present to you today the evaluation reports of our collaborative effort on November sixteenth of the Chicago Schools Tour that we sponsor along with you. We visited five schools, two high schools, three elementaries, one of those being a charter school, and I think the evaluations speak for themselves. One of the things that I will comment on, I have been doing these tours for many, many years. In fact, I go back to when Carlos Escoitia used to work with us on the tour, so we've come full circle. But I would just like to make two comments that I think you'll see referenced over and over again, and one is, they want more time with children. They ask just to spend more time in those classrooms, that's one of the highlights for them. Board members can never seem to get enough of children in learning, and consequently they want more time on the tour. But overall, I'd like to also thank Kara Krantz, who was my spot person here in the board office, and of course, your board member Jessie Ruiz, who spoke at our breakfast and is on both boards. So it is indeed an honor to be able to present such good news to all of you.
Thank you Cynthia, and thanks for the report and the feedback.
You're welcome.
I know Jessie probably want to...
No, just thank you for the opportunity for school board members from across the state to come and see what's happening in Chicago, and I hope it's helpful to have those folks go back to their own communities, implement some of the good things they saw, and lend some of their thoughts on what good things they can share with us.
Yes, and if you note in there, one of the schools we went to was an IB school, and many of the comments were regarding that. So board members do take the ideas they receive and see, and go back to their districts and talk about it, and in some cases, implement it. So I commend you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Deborah Hendricks Black, and I rise to address the Board as a volunteer parent facilitator and educator for Stand University for Parents, and we call that Stand Up. I stand here with one of my fellow facilitators, and you've heard some parents today talk about a research-based ten-week family engagement program for parents, and it helps our parents support our children. We're focused on actionable steps for parents and can take immediate action to help parents help their children with academics and make sure they're on track for college. We teach, we practice, and revisit the key concepts over ten weeks, and we work with our parents to define roles, to help them with school relationships, help them understand student data, grades, and specific ways to help students learn at home. In the first six months of this program, we graduated a hundred and twenty-five parents at four elementary schools here on the south and west side in Chicago, and these parents are ready, willing, and able to engage not only in their home schools, but help the system as a whole. As a facilitator in Stand Up at Smith IB School, I had the responsibility of empowering parents and helping with positive impact. That helps the parents, and not to mention, it helps the school. I've seen firsthand how Stand has increased parent engagement in schools and supported positive change in the Chicago school system. I ask you to continue your support of Stand as we are learning partners with you, that we impact education and we organize and support quality schools for all of our students in Chicago. I'm proud to be an advocate and to support Stand and to give parents in the Chicago schools a way to impact lives, impact their children, and impact schools and families. I thank you for your time. I have brought some materials to share with you about our program, and we look forward to a continued relationship with the Chicago Public Schools. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Good morning, distinguished members of the Board. I'm Ari Fried, the founder of The Orange School. I have some comments to submit to you, but I also have some extemporaneous comments to make at the end, which won't be represented on the paper. The Orange School stands to be a dramatically different model for Chicago, and we're grateful to CPS for its careful and rigorous supervision of our application. Our school design depends on three pillars: arts education, interdisciplinary learning, and social responsibility. As you know from our public hearing and proposal, we intend to be a relatively small school that will share resources and professional development with our neighboring schools. We will build partnerships with nearby traditional schools so that we can help all the children in our community. Arts integration is a powerful lever for student learning. The Orange School will be an effective demonstration of the kinds of arts education championed by parents and educators all over the city. Our design reflects calls for the kinds of arts education detailed in Chicago's new cultural plan, and of course, the arts education plan from CPS, and collaboration between CPS's Office of Arts Education and Ingenuity Incorporated. High-quality programming in the arts will come from our arts partners, such as Chicago Arts Partnerships in Education, CAPE, the Old Town School of Folk Music, and the Second City, and also from local teaching artists from our school's neighborhood. This school was born out of kitchen-table discussions that date back to two thousand and five between two teachers. We have worked very hard to refine our school design so it meets CPS's rigorous standards, aligns with contemporary research, and is responsive to community involvement. We thank CPS for recommending The Orange School for authorization, and we look forward to the Board's vote as the next step in a long and productive relationship. In addition, I'd like to address the Board's concerns about effective community engagement in founding a charter school. We agree that this is an essential part of every school, charter or not. We have engaged several communities in the search for a neighborhood that demonstrates a need and desire for a school like ours.
Mr. Fried, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
We have that in Rogers Park, and that is why we identified it, and there is plentiful evidence of that engagement, the shape of it, in our application, along with plenty of evidence of our leadership and who's involved, and why this will be ensured to be a high-performing school right off the bat. Thanks very much for your time.
Mr. Chairman, I just have a question on Mr. Fried. So you referenced your school's neighborhood, is that neighborhood Rogers Park, so that's where your school would go?
Rogers Park was exactly where we proposed in two thousand and eleven, and that is still our preference, because it's been difficult to pin down exactly what sorts of facilities will be available with CPS. We thought it would be in our organization's best interest to continue our community engagement in other neighborhoods that had a similar need, and so we've done that, and so we have several neighborhoods actually where there's been traction. But Rogers Park was still...
So Rogers Park is your first choice, and there are other neighborhoods that you're interested in putting the school in, or you may?
Not as a replicator, but we are considering looking at other neighborhoods in collaboration with CPS.
What are those other neighborhoods?
Specifically, they are Rogers Park, Albany Park, Uptown, Austin, Bronzeville, and Englewood.
And you've done community engagement in those areas, or you're in the process?
We are in the process, and I can show you evidence. In fact, we had somebody who was on her way here today to speak on behalf of one of those neighborhoods, but I have detailed information about who I've been meeting with in those neighborhoods and what progress we've been making. I'd be happy to go over that with you.
All right, maybe we'll schedule something later. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I wanted to ask some questions. What is your background in education? Because you're starting up, what is your background?
I began my career as a teacher in an alternative high school while I was still in college. I was there for three and a half or four years.
Where was that?
That was in western Massachusetts. I then joined Teach for America and was teaching in New Orleans, and then Mississippi. I continued my work in, this is where I got very hardcore about my arts integration work, and I got my master's degree at the University of Mississippi while maintaining those relationships in the Mississippi Delta, so that we could use a blues curriculum as a way of augmenting core curriculum achievement. From there, I moved up to Chicago, and I taught in Winnetka for a year. After that, I was at the Old Town School of Folk Music as an arts administrator for ten years, hiring teachers, developing curricula, and then I joined UIC's Principal Pipeline Program, the Urban Education Leadership Program, where I worked as an assistant principal for a year and a principal intern for a year, and am well on my way to getting the doctorate. There are also several candidates that are in our proposal for many different staff positions, teachers and leadership, who bring their own expertise to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for speaker number eleven, please, Marjoriea Morris. Our next speakers then will be speaker number thirteen, please, Beth Carrera-Napleton, followed by speaker number fourteen, Brandon Green, and then speaker number fifteen, LaShawn Trana Campbell, please.
Hello, I'm here today as one of the founders of Chicago Collegiate Charter School. I wanted to thank Dr. Bird Bennett and the Board for all of your hard work over many years to ensure all children in Chicago have access to a high-quality education. The mission of Chicago Collegiate is to make sure that one hundred percent of our students are able to successfully graduate from the college of their choice within six years of their graduation from high school. This is an incredibly ambitious goal. Right now, nationally, about eight percent of students from low-income backgrounds complete college, and roughly seven percent of all CPS students from families of all income levels do so. We are proposing to open, as was mentioned earlier, in Roseland-Pulmon, a community that historically has not had a lot of quality school options. According to CPS data, the average graduation rate at local high schools is forty-two percent; the average ACT score is fourteen point four. Roughly twenty percent of students in elementary schools are at or above grade level in math, with about fifteen percent at or above grade level in reading. In order to be sure that our school was a good match for the needs of the neighborhood, we have met with over fifty community leaders. We had nine community conversations, we submitted two hundred and seventy-two intent-to-enroll forms from CPS parents who would be interested in Chicago Collegiate as an option for their child. We also collected six hundred and two separate signatures of support from community residents, and included over twenty-four letters of support from community and educational leaders. Over and over, we heard different versions of the same refrain: "We need a school like this in our community," whether that was from a parent whose door we knocked on, or in a conversation with a pastor or alderman. We know that underutilization is a concern in Roseland. We are looking forward to working together with CPS on a facility solution that works for our school and does not exacerbate this problem, and allows us to open in this community where quality schools are so needed and where we've done so much hard work.
Ms. Napleton, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
In our conversations, we would ask people, parents would ask us over and over again, first and foremost, is there a quality school option for my child to attend? That was always parents' first concern, and too many times on the far-south side, the answer was no. With the support of you all, we hope to open in the fall so that we can start to ensure that no turns into a yes for thousands of families on the far-south side who are desperate for this option.
Has anyone at CPS actually discussed any buildings with you, where exactly you might locate?
Yep, so we have had, in our application, we mentioned that we'd be open to a CPS facility if that was a possibility, and then we've also been searching for independent facilities, given that there's a lot of moving pieces on buildings right now.
Where exactly, I mean, I know the area pretty well, where exactly are you talking about going?
Yep, so in terms of other facilities, we're looking, well, you know, you never talk about real estate publicly, right? It's like a first rule of that, but we're looking right in the heart of Roseland, so somewhat near Palmer Park, if you're familiar with the area, for our independent facility.
I grew up four blocks south of Palmer.
Well, excellent. We'll be looking forward to having you visit, hopefully, one day.
I'm a visiting mom every weekend.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Brandon Green. I am a junior from Wendell Phillips Academy High School, and I am also the acting commander over our fourth GROTC unit, as well as a participant in our golf team, Sound Studio Club, and as well as our electronic repair club. During my freshman year, I didn't really know what to expect coming into high school, especially with them telling us there was going to be a turnaround school. I was already terrified from the transition from elementary school to high school and independence, but hearing the school tell us that we'll be leaders put more worry on me, especially because my thought at the time was how could someone like me, who was very shy and very away from the crowd, be seen as a leader? But now, since attending Wendell Phillips for three years, I can honestly see why. Wendell Phillips has told me that I can do, be, and achieve anything that I possibly can, like Wendell Phillips has told me that there's no limit to what you can do, and you can go as far as possible. In the beginning of my junior year, I began with a predicted score of eighteen with the ACT, and myself, I felt that that was unacceptable, and my teachers felt the same way as well. So they worked with me and the other students, and since then, I went from an eighteen to a twenty, and a twenty to a twenty-two in our first two practice ACT tests.
All right. Congratulations.
And aside from even just the classwork, Wendell Phillips is responsible for ninety percent of the confidence I have, and they're responsible for the man you see in front of you today. And I say "man" because Wendell Phillips has molded me just into that. Wendell Phillips has also gave the neighborhood a new breath, a new voice, and everything else. I would like to thank the Board, as well as AUSL, for making Phillips a turnaround school, so thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speakers then will be speaker number fifteen, please, LaShawn Trana Campbell, followed by the group from Foundations College Prep, speaker number sixteen, Miki O'Neill, and speaker thirty-seven, Kristin Vanda Walker, followed by speaker number seventeen, please, Miranda Williams.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ashley Shonj Renee Campbell. I am a graduating senior from Collins Academy High School. I currently attend Southern Illinois University at Carbondale. I just completed my first semester of college with three point two GPA, thanks to Collins Academy High School preparing me for college under the AUSL. Tasha, everyone, sorry. I would like to say thank you all for investing in the North Mondale community, because we don't get much recognition, and due to Collins getting recognition, now I am participating in a documentary that will be coming out in the middle of next year, which is called Undroppable, and I'm actually starring in it. I've also got the opportunity...
(laughing).
This is amazing.
Yes, I actually got the privilege of actually attending a television show, well,
a morning talk show, Windy City Live, twice, and I've also been on the advanced leadership team, have gotten opportunities to speak at the Chicago Urban League on teen joblessness last year, had the opportunity to speak at Home and Square on teen gun violence. I've had the opportunity to be a teen ambassador for my community, so it's been great getting recognition, so I want to thank you all for seeing that AUSL can make a difference in communities such as North Mondale. Thank you.
(applause).
Hello, my name is Miki O'Neill, and I'm founding executive director of Foundations College Prep. First of all, I would like to thank CPS and the Board for listening to us today. We are standing here today with key members, with key supporters and team members, because we believe very strongly that the neighborhood's families and students in the greater Roseland-Pulmon community deserve the very best schools in the country, schools that any one of you would be happy to send your students to. Unfortunately, the statistics in the area enrage us. Students attend high schools where more than half of the students drop out, and almost none, two, graduate academically prepared for college. We were originally drawn to this community where I've been working extensively over the past twelve months, because of this need, and also because there is grassroots support and demand for better schools. One of our key supporters, who is unfortunately not here today because her daughter was in the emergency room this morning, but one of our key supporters, Joyce Chapman, who is chairman of the Pulmon CDC and of the Community Action Council around far-south schools, she drove last year, parent activists, and organized the community to turn around a CPS school, which was a first for the neighborhood, for CPS, for the city. She's a key ally, and we've been working extensive, I've been pounding the pavement, spending as many times, going to as many community meetings, and working directly with members of the community over the past twelve months. Going to the Community Action Council meetings and multiple other types of community meetings, meeting with community organizations and leaders, including the Metropolitan Family Services, Neighborhood Housing Services, which is a big supporter, Catholic Charities, Chicago Neighborhood Initiative, many more. And we would be happy before the Board votes to approve us in a final location, to ensure that the Board feels comfortable with the level of our community support, and further demonstrate that in writing and formal channels.
Ms. O'Neill, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, I also want to mention that our school leadership team does have school leadership administrative experience in high-performing charters. Our principal is a current Pat Ryan Fellow, running the middle school at Elaine Lock, which is the highest performing charter school in the city. She also has experience at Noble, and our dean is an AP at a charter, was an AP at a charter school that was well outperforming the city. Thank you very much for listening to us.
I just have a question, a couple of questions. So how long's the principal been in Elaine Lock School?
She's doing the Ryan Fellowship, so this is...
So she's just there this year, right? And then the...
It's very selective.
Yes, they are. The dean, and the dean was an AP at another charter school, right? For how long?
She was an AP for a year, and she's now transitioned out of that so that she can focus on us.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So our next speaker then will be speaker seventeen, Miranda Williams. Last call. Moving on then to speaker number eighteen, Ofelia Sweetalk, followed by speaker number nineteen, Yvonne Johnson. Then, Mr. President, I'd like to note that Christina Maylie is here from the CTU representing Karen Lewis, and then we will proceed with speaker number twenty-one, Noreen Gutencas, please.
Hello, my name is Ofelia Sweetalk, and I'm a parent at Row Elementary. I'm also a member of Stanford Children. I want to tell you about my children's school, Row Elementary, a charter school in Westtown. What I love about Row is how its teachers individualize their teaching. Even though my scholars perform above average, the school continues to push them even higher. I feel welcome, and there is open communication between staff and families. We have an extended learning day filled with a rich curriculum. We have art, music, gym, and drama. We also have choir and dance after school. Our parents are involved and support our school. Truly, we represent our school's values of pride, success, and honor. Last year, our ISAT scores increased by seven points, the highest of any public schools in Westtown. Our Row community is an important part of serving the Westtown community. I invite the Board and CEO, Bird Burnett, to visit our wonderful school. Thank you CPS for continuing to support our school. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Good afternoon, Board members, President. I am a proud parent of a sixteen-year-old son who attends Johnson College Prep Noble. I was recommended by his teacher and principal of the grade school he attended for my child to go to a Noble charter school, and at the time, I had never heard of a Noble school. They recommend a disciplined environment for him because of his attitude. They were having problems, and I was having a problem with my son's attitude. And so I went online and I registered him for Johnson College Prep in Englewood, and I never looked back since. He loves the school so much, so do I and his dad. His attitude has changed greatly. He is now an student. He plays basketball, football, he participates in kickboxing, ROTC Marine Corps, he plays in a band, saxophone, and he maintains a four-point-two-one GPA.
Oh, that is so great.
And also perfect attendance. Thank you. So now you can see why I'm a proud parent. The teachers are wonderful, they're caring, they're patient. I have been told by several of his teachers that my son has really changed and that he's a leader. He advises other students, that he...
Ms. Johnson, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure.
Thank you.
That he's an intelligent young man with great potential. I'm glad and satisfied that I made the right choice by choosing a great education and a safe environment for my child. It gives me hope for what a safe and high-performance school can bring to a community. I want to thank you all for supporting the Noble high-quality schools, and I ask that you continue to support these schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
Next speaker then, Christine Maylie, please, followed by speaker number twenty-one, Noreen Gutencas, and then speaker number twenty, Yanid Gonzalez, followed by speaker twenty-two, Tina Butler, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Christine Maylie. I'm the financial secretary of the Chicago Teachers Union. Thank you for letting me speak on behalf of my thirty thousand members. The first time that I was personally misled by the Board of Education was when Arnie Duncan told my school, told my principal, that my school would not be closed. Later that year, it was. The closing caused chaos, disruption, and pain to the students that I served and their families. It was emotionally scarring, but it was also academically unwise. The students' academics suffered. They can't focus on their education in the midst of upheaval. So today, I want to talk about trust. How can the public trust this Board of Education when they've been systematically misrepresenting information for the past year? The news in the Tribune today is not surprising. We know that there's been these plans since summer, we heard about them. We've requested the plan three times from this Board, and we have been denied it, saying that they don't know what we're talking about. CPS misrepresented the existence of the plan. There may not be a final list, but there is a plan. We know there's a plan. They've misrepresented the amount of empty seats based on documents from CPS from the early two thousands. The hundred thousand students that are missing are not actually missing, they've been gone, they haven't been around since two thousand. The number of schools has also been misrepresented, where we don't know... The number of, the number of schools has also been misrepresented where we don't know what we're talking about, 100, 200 schools. Are there too many seats? Are there not enough seats? Because we're opening new schools, but we're saying that there's too many seats. The estimated savings in the document in the Trib today, what's the correct number? They say they're going to save between $140 million and $675 million, but it's going to cost up to $450 million. So is that a savings? Is that a loss? We don't know what's going on here because we haven't been given clear information.
Ms. Maylie, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure. One more point. The basis, the biggest misrepresentation, I believe, is this independence of the commission. As the Tribune and WBEZ have reported, this commission is actually a, almost a front group for the New Schools of Chicago, which was the former Renaissance Schools Plan, the people that have been closing our schools for the last decade. So if, if we really want to have a transparent discussion about what's going on and how we can best serve our schools, we have a lot of trust to build, and I don't think we're doing a very good job of it these days. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'd like to respond to the people who came here to speak from Pressing Elementary. The reason why the kindergarten classroom could have 42 kindergarteners, and this is not an isolated instance, is because the current utilization standard of CPS says that efficient enrollment has class sizes of 36 children. So as an elementary teacher, and I, as, I would like to ask the audience if they believe that it's wise to have 36 children in a kindergarten of first grade or a second grade. I do believe the Chicago Tribune reports on the plan to close 120 of our existing neighborhood schools. And surprise, surprise, these schools are to be closed on the west side and on the south side, in the low-income communities that most need strong public institutions where teachers, paraprofessionals, parents, and students are bound together in close-knit relationships. Yesterday, over 100 students, educators, and parents marched here, and we called on the board to support our families by supporting demands of low-income workers to help lift them out of poverty through wage increases. Since parental income is the most important predictor of student achievement, it should be a no-brainer that the Board of Education would support parents' demands for a living wage. But no, this board is far too busy planning to shut down our schools, to open up new charter schools, as you will today, and to approve new TIF projects. Ms. Bird Bennett has stated that she sees her job as repairing the broken trust between school communities and the Chicago Public Schools. This trust cannot be repaired. The board has proven itself cynical and determined to approve the mayor's plans.
Ms. Gutencas, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Happy to.
Thank you.
And to approve the mayor's plans to close our neighborhood schools and privatize our system by selling off our schools to the highest bidder. Today you will vote in favor of approving four new charter schools, adding to the already approved charter schools, bringing to 13 the number of charters that open in September. And Ms. Zapp, seven of those previously approved charter schools have no locations, so they could be anywhere. They'll probably be put in Inglewood and Bronzeville and Roseland, too, where there already is a so-called utilization crisis. However, all of Chicago is watching.
Please, please, please finish, please finish.
And we will defend our schools, our students, and our school communities.
Thank you.
Thank you. As the next speaker approaches, I would like to note for the record that Dr. Hines had left the meeting at approximately 1:10 PM. So our next speaker is Speaker number 20, Yanid Gonzalez, followed by Speaker number 22, Tina Butler. And then I would like to call Speaker number 23, Delino Hastings, followed by Speaker number 24, Melissa Zacos, and Speaker 30, James Valades from the Intrusive Schools. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Yanid Gonzalez, I'm a parent at Row Elementary, and I'm a member of Stanford Children. As a parent and Stanford member, we want CPS to hear our parent voices to inform their school action decisions. We made this file to determine where we stand. Our parent leadership, leadership, sorry, our parent leadership team is made up 32 parents from 25 different SIPS schools, representing over 500 members Chicago-wide. We have parents from Magnet, Selective Enrollment, Charter, Turnaround, and Neighborhood Schools. We call on CPS to ensure all children who are affected by school actions will move from schools with a lower performance rating to a higher one. Reinvest in all receiving schools, expand charters only if they have a proven perform. This last point is especially important to me as a parent at a charter school. We start by the Western Settlement House, which has served my community in Westtown since 1891. The Settlement House always listens and supports my family goals and helps us through our obstacles. Row Elementary continues this tradition with pride, success, and honor. Last year, our ISAT scores increased by seven points, the highest of any public school in Westtown. Our Row community is the settlement community, which is Westtown community. I invite the board and CEO, Bird Bennett, to visit our wonderful school. CPS, please listen our parent voices and renew our schools and renew our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez.
Good afternoon, my name is Tina Butler, and I am a CPS New School grandparent. I have 18 grandchildren attending school, 10 of them which are in public school. I have one in a charter school. New School charter schools have not closed any schools now. I am a product of Roseland. I stay in Argyle Gardens now. We only have one charter school out there, and they're talking about closing schools. I don't believe that, that is aroma. Our children need to be taught, they need education, that's why these people are not productive citizens. Our children deserve a good education like everybody else's. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next speaker, please, Speaker 23, Delino Hastings, followed by Speaker 24, Melissa Zacos, and then Speaker number 30, James Valades. Okay, Melissa Zacos, please, 24.
Good afternoon, President Vitale, and members of the board. My name's Melissa Zacos, and I'm here to talk about Intrusive Schools. I'm the founder of one of the four schools being proposed today. And I had some prepared remarks, but I think it might be more helpful to address some of the concerns that were brought up first. So what I heard as questions were, number one was location. So we at Intrusive Schools have been very, working very closely with CPS, people at the portfolio team, as we're looking for independent facilities and always bringing the addresses of those facilities to CPS and saying, will this help to relieve overcrowding? So we're quite open on our locations. I, I'll talk about experience in a second, but I have a lot of experience in CPS across all the city, and I plan to work quite closely with neighborhood principals. So as long as we're relieving overcrowding, we feel like we can work well in the community, and we've been focused specifically on the northwest side, looking at Hermosa, Belmont, Craigan, Portage Park, et cetera. As far as experience, I spent about nine years here at Chicago Public Schools. I led the AMP schools for five or six years, so that was about 100 schools across the city. After that, I led the Pershing Network, which is on the southwest side, 31 schools. So one thing that you mentioned is, have I led a charter school before? And the answer is no, I've always been a district person. But we've been very cognizant of that as we built the team. So our finance and operations person has both been at charter schools and has worked on charter school financing, and I've also built a board of people that have invested in charter schools and those that have worked in charter schools. We have gotten a lot of support, both locally and nationally, from a funding perspective, and some of that has come from the charter school community. So the Charter School Growth Fund, assuming that we're approved, has offered up a very large grant to us, et cetera. So I think that we're-
Ms. Zacos, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Please conclude. Okay, I'll make one last comment, just the, as far as collaboration-
It's okay, I'd appreciate you to continue, just answer my question. If it takes 30 more seconds, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. As far as collaboration, we always say that it's really important to have charter schools work closely with the district schools, and the day-to-day, like, reality of that is pretty hard. You know, when I led the Pershing Network, there was a charter school in our network, and shamefully now, looking back on it, we never talked to them. And it wasn't their fault, it wasn't our fault, we just didn't do it. But I actually think that because of very personal relationships with principals in about 100 schools, that we will actually do that. So right now, whenever I create a new step or something else that we're trying to figure out in the design of our school, it's CPS principals that are giving me information. You know, I, I say, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? So we're already doing a lot of collaboration. This week, we led a free camp at Chavez Elementary where we were asking kids for feedback on the model, we were giving them extra support on things that they needed. So I just think it's really important that I view this as a way to both help serve students, but also work with our CPS colleagues on designing a new school model.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I, I think James could speak next, but we've probably said most of it.
I think we're good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you then. Our next speaker, Mr. President. Speakers will be Speaker number 25, please, Yolanda Alvarado, followed by Speaker number 40, Chris Butler, and then Speaker number 26, David Ireland, followed by Speaker 29,
Good morning, board. I stand before you as a member of the New School Community of Advocates, and I too am a parent of two CPS students that attend a gifted slash fine arts academy on the, on the north side of the city, Pritzker. I come before you to urge you to, to consider carefully the applications that are before you. It's apparent that there's a lot of emotion about whether Chicago needs a charter school or if we need quali, a quality school, or what type of school children need in this community. What is clear, though, is that every student and every community should have a quality school to attend. Unfortunately, I can say that I have to do a one-and-a-half-hour commute from the south side of the city to the north side of the city. While I'm happy with, with the, the educational option that my students have, I also am slightly disgruntled, like many people in this room are, with several emotions that are happening in regards to the lack of quality options. And as an educator that has taught in the Chicago Public School system, I also believe that when, in reflection, when we look at how our system is competing with other systems across the city, we still lack in offering our students quality educational options that are close to their homes. So whether it be a charter school, or a contract school, or whatever type of school, we're failing. So when there's a list of schools that are supposedly, you know, rumored to close, et cetera, et cetera, we need to really look at every single school, at every single community, and actually have community members participate in the process like myself. I think what, what has happened in the last couple of years is that parents haven't had the opportunity to be able to express their concerns in community forums that are being held across the city like they are today. And while the opportunity to have educators and educated professionals comment on what your child needs, the true advocate is always the parent, because you need to have a home and student and parental connection in order to make the education happen. So I urge you again to relook at the applications with your educated eye, and to think, for those of you who are parents, in light of what has happened in Connecticut, to make sure that the schools and the educational options that we offer our children are that, that we, that are opportunities that we can, in reflection, look back and be proud of.
Next speaker, please, Chris Butler.
Good afternoon, and thank you to the board members for the opportunity. My name's Chris Butler, and I am the Director of Advocacy at New Schools for Chicago. I wanted to talk to you today about the New Schools Expo that my organization co-sponsored with Chicago Public Schools on December 8th at Soldier Field. At the expo, there were more than 100 campuses of schools of choice that were charter schools. There were AUSL schools, turnaround schools, magnets were represented, all types of schools of choice. The expo was also supported by more than 100 community partners, and I have a list of those organizations for you. What I also have here is a stack of, of papers that represent the more than 1,000 families that attended the expo, looking for high-quality options in their communities. I also brought a map to show you. We mapped out where these families came from. This is 1,000 families representing multiplied thousands of students looking for options. What this means is that there is demand and desire for high-quality options. What this means is that there are thousands of families across the city who would choose to put their kids in a, in a high-quality option if they were offered that choice. And in my work, I talk to these parents, and, and these parents, perhaps one day they will march in the street, but traditionally, they fight for their parents, for their students in a very different way. They come to the New Schools Expo. They're those 19,000 students on charter school waiting list. They're the multiplied thousands of families on waiting lists for magnet schools and select for enrollment.
Ms. Butler, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So we just come here to urge you that as we try to think about what we need to do with the district as a whole, remember that there's a lot of demand out there for high-quality options, and you have to continue to be aggressive in opening high-quality options for parents in the city of Chicago. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Ms. Butler.
Our next speaker then, please, David Ireland, followed by Carol Lee. Moving on to Speaker number 27, please, Rogers Jones, followed by Speaker 28, Edward Peacher.
Good afternoon, and to the president, and certainly to the board here. My name is Rogers Jones. I am a community resident of Roseland. My family has lived in Roseland for 59 years. My father was a Chicago police officer for 36 years. My sister, 26 years, is a Chicago public school teacher. My wife, 13 years, is a Chicago public school teacher. I represent the Roseland Community Safety Networks Coalition, where over a couple years ago, maybe three or four years ago, Darian Albert was killed, as everyone knows, directly across from the center that my wife and I have owned, trying to stop the violence in the city of Chicago, especially in Roseland. I support Chicago Collegiate because I am one of the individuals that when Chicago Collegiate came to about 50 different organizations, I represent about eight. I saw what they were trying to do. I understood it. I have a son who attends Noble Charter School. I would love to have had my son attend a Chicago Collegiate in Roseland, but Roseland didn't have one. What Chicago Collegiate is doing right now is they're doing something that I want done for young people to have, to get inspired, for them to make a plan, for them to change their attitude and their thinking that I will be able to say that I saw in Roseland. Young people change their life, and that can happen with a high-quality choice school. So I urge the board, board, to not only to consider charter schools, specifically Chicago Collegiate, but to think about all of the choices of high-quality schools. You've done a great job in what you've done in all of the schools. I'm a product of Chicago Public Schools. I graduated-
Ms. Jones, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Certainly. I graduated from a Chicago Public Elementary School, high school, Chicago State University, but I'm looking for something different to happen in Roseland, and I'm hoping that working together, which I believe deserves a standing ovation, will happen. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
Thank you. As the next speaker approaches, Speaker 28, Edward Peacher. I'd like to call Speaker 31, Queen Sister, followed by Speaker 32, Sylvester Hendricks, and then Speaker 33, Lawrence Legus, please.
Mr. President and board, thank you for the opportunity to address you. As was stated, my name is Bishop Edward Peacher. I'm the founding pastor of Chicago MC Church in the Inglewood community, and I come on the, the behalf of the Inglewood community to urge you, even in light of the diminished or the reduced, reduced utilization of the schools, to keep the choices alive. I want to just relay a simple experience that we've had as the pastor of this church. Through development stages, we've often had to go to multiple services to, to accommodate the parishioners on Sunday morning. And what I've determined, what we discovered is that when we give choices, we change the conversation. The, the multiple services on Sunday morning changes the conversation from, do I go to church or not go to church? And I know everybody here goes to church, you can say amen. Do I go to church or not go to church? But with multiple services, do I go to the first service, or the second service, or the third service? And, and what that does, if we have choices- And, and what that does, if we have choices in the Inglewood community, it changes the conversation to, do I go to school or not go to school? To, do I go to this school or this school or this school? So I want to urge you, please, even in light of the diminished capacity or the diminished attendance of the schools, keep the choices alive because it changes the overall nature of the system and it makes the system more effective. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Reverend Peacher.
Last call for Speaker 31, Queen Sister.